Called our at the Palm Coast City Council meeting for December 20, I'm sorry. January 17th, 2012, 9:00 AM, we placed that in the public's meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you realize, the mayor is not here this morning. However, he's on holiday. And according to the guidelines, I will be presiding for this morning. So with that, we'll have the roll call.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Meeker.
Here.
Vice Mayor, all other members present.
Thank you. Let me have the acceptance or approval of the minutes.
I'll motion to approve the minutes unless there are any changes that are necessary.
Second.
Probably move the second back, we've approved the minutes. All of the favorites say aye.
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 Thank you. Let's see where we are. We have a resolution this morning. And I think Mr. Landon can take us to that. I believe.
Good morning, City Council. Yes, first item resolution is for our solid waste contract. It's better known as trash hauling. This has been a very lengthy process. Almost a year we've been going through this process to either renew or sign a new contract for this service throughout Palm Coast. City Council instructed us to go out for proposals. City Council gave us very, very specific guidelines as to what you would like to see in the contract and the services you wanted to maintain. And also look at some options or alternatives to upgrade the service. We have completed the proposal process. The goal today is not for you to take action, but for you to receive any public comment you have on the proposal and allow us to finalize the contract and bring that back to you for your next workshop and next meeting. So today, Diane is going to make the presentation. And once again, without the final contract, there is no action for City Council today, but we wanted to get the public process started. So Diane, if you'll please take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good morning, Council. First slide. In, I guess it was July when we started going through this process. And it was determined by Council that we were going to go out to bid for these services. There were certain directions that Council required us to put into the RFP. And what we have is the same service that we have today was required, which is the two one and one, which actually means two trash pickup days per week that include bulk and white goods pickup, recycling one day per week, and curbside yard waste pickup one day a week. The difference that we have on the recycling on this new contract is that we are going to go single stream. And what that is, is currently we are a dual-sort recycling process, which means each resident is given two bins, recycle bins, that they separate all the paper into one and then all the plastic, glass, and everything else into the other. And then that is how the truck is. The truck is a two-sort process. But now, we have asked to go to single stream, which means every resident can just put everything all into their bins. They do not have to separate anything. Also, the requirement was on the trash days that it was going to remain a manual, two-man pickup crew. Also, on the recycling part of it, we said that we didn't require to have just manual. We would also allow for them to do an automated system. And also at your direction, we asked for a recycling rewards program so that residents could be rewarded for the amount of recycling that they put out front on a weekly basis. Also, we were requiring that there is a global positioning system, equipment in the trucks. And last but not least, you required us to put into the RFP that they participate in community events and education program. When the bids came in, these are the prices that the four responders gave. As you can see at the very bottom, this is the current charge that we, each of the residents are being charged on a monthly basis. And that includes a fuel surcharge. So they're actually paying right now nineteen dollars and eighty-two cents per month per household, plus a 50 percent fuel surcharge. And that's what-
Fifty cents?
What did I say?
Percent.
Oh, fifty, I'm sorry, fifty cents.
You shocked me. I'm behind in my opinion.
So that's what equals the twenty dollars and thirty-two cents per month.
Diane?
Yes.
Do all of the waste services bid to provide exactly the same services such as you've just delineated on a previous slide?
Yes.
So these costs represent their quotes for doing the same thing?
Yes, and we were very definitive about how they had to bid each one of these services, and it was a base price. So all of these prices that you see are a base price. Next slide. There were five people on the evaluation team when the RFPs came in. This slide is basically just informational purposes only. Each of the evaluators was able to evaluate up to a hundred points for each of the haulers on several different types of requirements that we had in the RFP. And this just shows you a total of all of the points that each one received. And at the end, there are the final ranking order of each of the responders. Next steps for Council, and that's why we're here today, is to select a hauler. Now, we did receive direction from Council at the last workshop to begin negotiations with Waste Pro. And we also, one of the things that we talked about last week at the workshop was to choose the alternate pricing options. As you saw on the previous slide, we have the base price, but there are also other alternatives that Council directed us to ask for quotes for. So we need to choose from them. And then, of course, we will negotiate and adopt a contract. These are the alternates that were in the RFP that we did get pricing on from the number-one ranked proposer, which of course was Waste Pro. The waste-to-energy facility, what that dollar amount represents is the add-on to the base price. So if we were to choose the waste-to-energy facility, it would have been the base price of eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents plus that amount. Also, we were directed to ask for compressed natural gas collection vehicles and a fueling facility, which we think go hand in hand. If we were to strictly go with the CNG vehicles, it would be a seventy cent reduction off of the base price. If we go to both the vehicles and the facility, as you can see, the facility charge is a fifty-five cent addition. So if the two of them are together, it's actually a net decrease of fifteen cents. One of the other requirements to price on was putting video cameras into the collection vehicles, the doorstep hazardous waste collection. And there were two different options of the type of hazardous waste collection that they were asked to price on. And that was a per resident, per month rate, which is that thirty cent addition to the base price. And if we chose not to charge each household on a monthly basis, the sixty dollars would be on a per resident, per pickup basis, and would be charged directly to the resident. And then finally, the last was if we were to go to a one-day-per-week solid waste pickup, and the pricing on that would have been a dollar twenty-five off of the base price.
Diane? Where you say per resident, or to resident, you actually mean residents, do you not?
Resident, per household. I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong word there. It's actually per household. There are roughly thirty-two thousand five hundred households in the city right now.
If a household is vacant and they're still going to get billed, are they not, for-
Yes, as long as there is water service to the house, because the solid waste bill does come through the utility bill. So as long as there is a water bill going to the house, there is a solid waste charge attached to it.
Okay, so in the case of the vacant house, there's a charge for trash collection that isn't being paid, but the city still has to pay the hauler, do they not?
Yes.
Okay.
And also-
Before you go on, it might be better to select aye and go to representation, and then you can ask the questions afterwards. Otherwise, you throw a train of thought off.
That's fine. I'm almost done anyway. The ones there that are in green, that have highlighted in green, were based on the conversation that Council had last week at their workshop. The discussions were that those three options were the ones that you were most interested in pursuing. The waste-to-energy facility was decided it was too expensive, and then for various other reasons at your discussions last week, those three in the green are what we were looking at, including as an alternate to the base bid. Next slide. That's it. Any questions?
Just before we start with Council, if you go back to the previous slide, just a clarification, when you do the negative number, is necessary to put the minus in there? We have to paren minus?
It's not necessary.
That would satisfy me probably, Mr. Lewis, when I say, "What's that stupid parenthesis doing there? I like a minus." Yeah, pluses down below, I like minuses up above. They're trying to satisfy me by throwing the minus in there.
And actually, if you're a math person, the minus and the parentheses turns it back into a plus.
Yeah, back to a plus, so yeah, yeah.
But it is a minus.
Diane, can we look at the very first slide, please? I have a few questions. Keep going.
Next one?
All right. The GPS system, walk me through the mechanics of that. I'm used to getting my trash picked up at a certain time. It's now hours later and it's not picked up yet, so I call the city.
You call the city.
And the city, does the city have the ability then to find where the vehicle is? Or do they call Waste Pro?
They call Waste Pro. Because obviously, these are Waste Pro's trucks. And it actually is an excellent customer service tool, only because, like you said, most residents, they're used to getting their garbage picked up on a certain day at a certain time. If a truck breaks down or something and you're not getting your trash picked up, and they call and want to know why, then they can easily find out where the truck is. They can tell them the reason why it's not there yet. It's an excellent tool.
And the participation in community events and education, what would you envision the trash hauler doing relative to that?
Because we have many different events in the city that are green-related, such as Arbor Day, we obviously want to encourage our solid waste hauler to be actively involved, especially when it comes to all of the green initiatives, recycling. We ask that they come to those events, have a booth, educate residents, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Mr. Meeker.
I was wondering about on the current base charge, or the new base charge, is the fuel adjustment built into that now?
Yes, yes. There-
Before, it was the base charge plus fifty percent equal to twenty dollars.
Plus fifty cents. Nice, you just said it. You said fifty cents.
That's it? I resign. Fifty cents?
Yes.
Fifty cents per, anyway.
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
And the point being, it's wrapped up into this current base. There is no, this new base amount of eighteen forty-seven-
Correct.
Plus the fifty cent fuel charge on it. It's all tied in.
There is, at the time of the contract, when we sign the contract and it commences, the base price will be the eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents. There is included in the contract, just like in this contract, the ability for the hauler on a quarterly basis to ask for an increase, a fuel increase, based on the base price at the beginning of the contract. What happens is there is a five percent buffer. Let's just say that gas is four dollars or whatever at the day the contract is signed. Five percent in either direction, up or down, that the actual fuel prices wave back and forth from the Department of Energy. And these are all numbers that we get from the Department of Energy every quarter. If the price stays within that five percent buffer, up or down, there's no change. At any time that the price of fuel goes above or below that base window, that window, is when they can begin to either charge us extra, or actually, the residents could see a reduction if gas prices were to fall.
So, Mr. Landon, your job is to set up the negotiation so the contract is signed somewhere around Labor Day?
So it's right at the peak of the crisis, I guess, yeah.
Going off of that, now, there was some question whether the natural gas, if we decide to go with natural gas, if that will also apply, if the fuel surcharge will apply to natural gas, was, were you able to confirm that?
Yes, I was able to confirm that. And actually, natural gas can be negotiated in the future. It's different from diesel fuel. So whoever we select, and they choose, we choose to do the natural gas, they, the hauler, can negotiate with whoever provides the natural gas, and they can set that rate for that whole five-year period of the contract. So we made sure that we put into the contract that we want it to remain the same. We do not want it to go up and down like the diesel, so.
So that's actually a benefit of going with compressed natural gas. Not only will the base price be less, but you won't have that surcharge possibility in the future.
And they know their costs for five years, we know our costs for five years. That's good stuff.
Also, were you able to clarify if the CNG vehicles and the fueling facility do come as a pair, or if they're separate items?
No, we have not had a chance to sit down with Waste Pro yet. We do have a meeting scheduled for later this week to discuss that, and then we'll bring that information back to you at the next workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, I would like to clarify the question on the vacant lots. This has a charge that goes with the property. So even if the lot is vacant, or in other words, if you don't use a service, it's one of those that you're charged. So if someone does not pay the bill, then there is a lien placed on the property. So we usually get paid that charge. There are some, as there are with any receivables, some of those receivables are not paid, and we have to write them off, but it's relatively a small amount.
Okay. Now, is, at this point, do I go to public to give a statement?
Please.
If there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this issue, please step forward, state your name, where you live, and you have three minutes in order to state your case. In that time, we will get you an answer at the end of all the questions.
Good morning, my name is Joe Canine, and I'm a resident of the E-section, 21 Elder Drive. I objected to the three dollars and sixty cents a year charge that is being recommended by the Council. We have a president who wants to spread the wealth, and a council that wants to spread the expense. This, to me, is wrong for the following reasons. For somebody to change their own motor oil is not only a dirty job, but a dangerous job, and should be discouraged at all cost. Handling a battery and battery acid is even worse than hauling around motor oil, even if it's only to the end of your driveway. We have businesses here that are equipped to safely change your motor oil and take your battery, as required by the state government, and it should not be left to individuals if we can prevent it. A council member brings up the green card, environmental. We should do this for the environment. You know how to save the environment. Let the individual that must, for either his own desire or her desire or need, change the oil, let them take it to the city garage, where all these white trucks are serviced, and let them drop it off there if they can't go to the other required location on Old Kings Road. Now, another thing that bothers me on this is that we have people in this town that they will not ever use this service. The recommended thing that I've seen done in other communities around the country is they have a cleanup day at least twice a year, in the spring and in the fall. And people can take items such as paints, hazardous material, to these drop-off sites, just like we do with Christmas trees after the Christmas holiday. So I'm against this dollar a penny a day. It comes to three sixty, let's say a penny a day. If you're in the insurance business, that's what you'd be pitching, oh, it's only going to cost a penny a day. I learned at a very early time in my life that if you mind the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. Thank you.
Next.
My name is Jay Begelman. I'm over on Wilmot Place. And I might have missed a lot of this, but I only had one concern with the new contract. And I think a lot of people in the room are old enough to remember the days when you could pick the trash and make a few dollars. At these tough times, I was wondering if we could put something in the contract where it's okay for people to pick the trash as a peddler. Right now, it's illegal. And the reason I mention this, one time I put out a bucket of copper fittings in my recycling, and they wouldn't take them. Told me there was no market for copper. All right? So I mean, when you go down the street and you see a nice set of, a nice dresser drawers there, or lawn chair, can we have a provision in there to pick the trash? That's all I have to say. And we used to make a living at this. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Charlie Erickson, Palm Coast. I don't know if I heard Mr. Landon, but Jim, did you say vacant lot would also pay a pickup fee? You did say lot, so that's what I keyed in on. I think you meant a vacant home. Perhaps, okay.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to know is, is the city charging the hauler a franchise fee that's included in that eighteen forty-seven? The other question I would have is, is it possible that any one of the other three haulers might have a more competitive bid if the Council decides to add on some of these accessory services? In other words, we've done a nice comparison of the base price, but have we looked at what the final product is that we want as a city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Going once? Going twice? Thank you. We'll return back to City Council. City Council for further comments or promotions.
Well, I'd like to comment on the issue of playing the green card or encouraging more of a nanny state within the city of Palm Coast. If there's anybody on this Council that does not like to see government further intrude beyond his driveway, I'm probably one of them. And for the government to step forward and tell me that I can't change the oil on my mower, on my leaf blower, that I can't properly handle twelve-volt batteries, that I can't handle used oil, that I can't handle latex paints or oil-based paints, I think is an invasion of my personal private property rights, and I am not in favor of that. What I am in favor of is good stewardship of these materials. And if it was so easy to do right now, then I wouldn't have so much of this stuff discarded behind homes as I do currently. So therefore, in order to make it easier to dispose of it, I think it's worth the thirty cents a month, which totals to three sixty a year, which is far less than the cost of a Big Mac at McDonald's right now, to make sure that I can take NiCad batteries and cellphone batteries and the battery backup batteries and the oil-based paints. And if I decide to pull the coolant out of a lawnmower or something, whatever, there's a large stream of household hazardous waste that is not being addressed now and needs to be addressed. I think this is an extremely cheap and efficient way to do it, and I still think it's the right thing to do.
Mr. Landon, I'm not sure if I need to come to you first or to the Council.
Well, I would be happy to try to answer some of the questions that the audience had. First of all, just to piggyback on that, one of the things that hasn't been stated are things like pesticides and herbicides and fertilizers and things that almost everybody has, particularly when they're going to move, and lots of times, they can't take it with them. Instead of putting it in the trash, disposing of it properly, this gives them that easy way. Yes, they could haul it to the old landfill there on Old Kings Road operated by the county. I also want to stress that just recently, we've had to hazardous waste drop-off days, actually at Central Park, very successful. And we'll continue to try to encourage people to do that also. So this is something that's consistent with what we've been working towards. Picking the trash, as one gentleman said, referring to is, it's not the contract, but we have an ordinance that says that you cannot go around when people put their trash on the curb and start rifling through it and picking things out of that and leaving what's left. I think you could only imagine if we had that going on every trash day in every neighborhood. It creates two things. A lot of people don't like to see someone coming up to their driveway, rummaging through their trash, and what's in that trash that they don't particularly care for somebody else to see. Secondly, is hard to control the mess. You know, if you start going through it and you leave things scattered, then is that Waste Pro's responsibility, the property owner's responsibility? Communities that do this, there's usually many, many side effects, unintended consequences of allowing people basically to rummage through other people's trash. But it would be an ordinance, it would not be part of the contract, because our Code of Ordinances says that you are not allowed to do that. The franchise fee question is, yes, the city does, when we collect the money on the utility bill, the city does keep ten percent of those charges. We call it a franchise fees to cover our costs. We have the administrative costs, we have the wear and tear on the streets. That is part of our general fund revenue. That is what we have today, and there is no proposed changes. But it is, we don't actually charge the company as much as we keep ten percent of the actual charges. The question about if we looked at alternative prices of the other three- The question about if we looked at alternative prices of the other three companies that made proposals, the way we set up the proposal was very clear that the base price would be what they would be evaluated on, so that we wouldn't get into this matrix, because you can't pick and choose, okay, you'll do the hazardous waste and we'll pick natural gas on, in other words, you have to come up with a company and then use their prices, and that's the way it was set up. It wasn't set up as a matrix where you could start picking and choosing the different services, because you have to have a hauler, and that hauler then provides all of those services. And so the evaluation of the other three haulers' alternatives is really impossible to accommodate. You have to pick a hauler.
The question was, did the other three haulers offer the same alternatives? Did they offer CNG? Did they offer the type of things that we're considering as icing on the cake, if you will? Did they offer those?
The, in your packet, you will see that we've actually put all of those in there. The answer to that question is, they all submitted prices, but Waste Pro is the only one that submitted a price for all of those. Some of them said, no, they wouldn't even consider that. Waste Energy Facilities is a good example where a couple of them didn't even offer that as an alternative. I think, and we haven't evaluated it because of the reason I said before, but I think if you look at those, you'll find that there's, the only one that might give you a better price is if you go a single day. You have one bid in there that could give you a better price if you go with a single, once-a-week service. But I don't think the other prices would change anything, and it would not change it drastically, and you'd have quite a reduction in service. Hopefully, that answered the question. That's all the questions that I heard.
That's about all of them, yes. So we bring it back to the city council for either motion or for the contract.
Vice Mayor, once again, we're not asking for a motion at this time, because your action would be actually to adopt the contract. We're looking for input from the public, get that started. Two weeks from, no, actually, it's a five-week, a month, so three weeks from tonight, the first Tuesday in February, we anticipate bringing this back to you for final action in the contract.
So after the, after those public services are selected, then we'll go to approve.
Right. The, unless you give us different feedback, if you go back to the alternatives that we're going to work on in the contract are those that you see in green, and that is to have the vehicles be the compressed natural gas, including the fueling station facility. Part of that discussion will be, where will that facility be? Will it be available to the city? Same discussion we had at workshop and part of our evaluation, because the city is looking at converting some of our large vehicles into compressed natural gas too, because of some of the same benefits. And then also, we're going to include the doorstep hazardous waste collection at each household, for each household, with the 30 cents per month charge on top of the base charge. Now, you can still make a, you know, when we bring the contract to you, you can still make changes, but that's where we're headed unless you tell us differently today.
Mr. Lewis, I did want to make one thing clear. Jim, you mentioned about the pesticide and yard chemicals, but I'm wondering if everybody out there really understands how many different things in the household qualify as household hazardous waste?
Yes.
We're talking about fluorescent tubes, the new fluorescent bulbs, those energy-saving bulbs, all have typically mercury or other things in them, and are a household hazardous waste. Bottles of unused bleach, the pesticides that you mentioned, I doubt that most people are following the directions and rinsing them three times and then puncturing the bottles to make sure that they can't be used, which is specified on the side of the package. Of course, the used oil. Of course, the latex paint by itself, I think if it's less than a half a gallon, it's not considered household hazard, but more than a half, it is, but whatever, it should be handled properly. Oil-based paints and stains, especially for those of us that use wood preservative on our back decks to try to keep them in one piece. Batteries of all kinds, whether it's the smaller kinds in the cellphones, up to the 12-volt batteries in your car, that's probably most of it. And if anybody still works on their car and does a coolant change, you know, that used coolant can be mixed in with the used oil, and then is, you know, handled as a hazardous waste, handled offsite. So there are a number of things that are included, not all of them big items related to those that can continue to work on their cars, but just these routine chemicals that are used in the household, whether it's drain-o, whatever.
Yes, concur 100%. Every house out there has something in the cabinet, under the sink, in the garage, that you should not be disposing of in our landfills, because it gets into the water system and with groundwater, et cetera. That's the whole idea, trying to encourage people to dispose of it correctly at a facility that can handle it correctly. Plus, that is one of the reasons why the educational element of the contract is there, is most people do not know exactly what is hazardous waste and what isn't, and that will be part of our educational program.
I think a display, demonstrating common, household hazardous waste would be a really good thing to have in the first educational opportunity.
Yes, those are the kind of things that we'll do. All our events, particularly those that are green-oriented, such as Arbor Day, Waste Pro will be there to show that, and then also show what you can recycle, because there's a lot of misunderstanding as to what you can and cannot recycle. So we will try very hard to educate people so they'll know what those services are available to them.
Any further discussion? I guess we're going to bring us back to workshop, and we'll bring it back to you.
Yes, that's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you all. And I believe at this time, since there's no further resolutions or ordinances as such, we'll move to consent agenda. And is there anything anyone wants to take off? Phil? So I guess we'll move on now to discussions by the city council.
Vice Mayor, we're going to need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll motion to approve, oh, I'm sorry. I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Probably move this segment, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of?
Aye.
Aye.
All of the against? Approve. All right, now we go to matters, not only agenda, city council. Anything?
First would be public participation. Anybody, citizen comment?
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I just want to know what's being done in Seminole Woods around the park over there? And have you, have, have there been discussions to see what you can do to rectify the situation over there in Seminole? I thank you.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I have to ask, are we still going to subsidize the tennis courts and the golf courses? I understand that this year is going to cost us another $100,000 to balance the books at the tennis courts. From what I remember, that tennis court was supposed to pay for itself after two years, and we're still throwing money into it. Now, either, you know, if you're in a business, a private business, and you're losing money every year to the tune of $70,000 or $80,000, you either quit or you raise your prices. So I'm asking this council, what are we going to do? Are we still going to subsidize? I know it's going to be in the budget. Last year was $70,000. This year, I understand, it's going to be $100,000. I think it's a time to quit. No, you can't make money on it, you can't break out even. Then you either charge the people more money or sell it, or get rid of it. One of the two. It's costing us money, it's my money, and I don't play, I don't play the game. If you want to play the game, play the game. And that goes for the golf course, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
All gentlemen, my name is Vincent Till, Palm Coast resident, section Seminole Woods. I have two questions to ask. Now that the city has decided not to sue the county over that $5 million from impact fee, is the county going to hand over the $5 million to us?
You get an answer, we're going to get through all the questions.
Pardon me, sir?
You'll get an answer after we have heard all of the questions. We're writing quite your question down now. When we get through that part of it, we'll get you an answer.
Okay, so I have another opportunity to come here?
No, no, but we'll get you an answer. If you're finished, just have a seat.
I think what they're saying, so there's no dialogue that goes back and forth. You can go ahead, ask your questions, and then we'll get you an answer to all of your questions at one time.
Thank you, thank you. The next question is, could $5 million take care of three projects? Because I noticed where we have three projects earmarked. They are Old Kings Road, that Parkway.
Palm Harbor Parkway.
That's right. And sidewalks for Seminole Woods. Could $5 million take care of those three projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next.
Charlie Erickson, Palm Coast. I, as like many, read the week in review regularly on the city website. I don't know whether this is interesting or what, but I just happened to see that one of the bits of information said that last week, the city received 24 litigation documents. I don't know if that's scary or what it means. The other thing is, I noticed that we did one-year renewals of three engineering firms, England Timms, Wade Trim, Dyer Riddle. And I guess I'm just interested in knowing why we need three engineering firms to provide services to us. I will also mention that I believe the Jacksonville one was the one that someone had mentioned to me, and I questioned counsel, was the rumored city hall project manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next. If there are no other questions for council, we'll return the discussion back to the council and Mr. Landon.
Well, let me start with Seminole Woods issue that was brought to city council by the neighborhood at your last meeting. Once again, the, a path or sidewalk along Seminole Woods is in our master plan. It is something that we actually have approved by the state as for a proposed grant, but it was not funded, the funding ran out before we got to that project. So right now, it is a matter of finding the funds. That situation hasn't changed from two weeks ago, last time we met. As far as the question on the impact fees, city council has instructed staff to put together a list of possible projects for the five, approximately $5 million that the county is holding of city impact fees, and their transportation impact fees, so they have to be used for some type of transportation. And then bring that report back to city council for your consideration to prioritize, and then meet with the county, both county administrations and county commissioners, to try to work out an agreement. We already actually have an agreement, but actually to implement that agreement to have those dollars go towards those transportation projects. The question is, will $5 million cover the three projects of a path along Seminole Woods, the extension of Old Kings Road, and the extension of Palm Harbor? Without having those actual cost estimates in front of me, but just knowing the type of cost, the answer, the short answer is no. Those three projects are going to be, a total of those three projects will be more than $5 million. That's one of the reasons why we'll have to prioritize. Now, the other possibility is, particularly with Old Kings Road, that is actually on the state's funding system right now, and we are under the preliminary design for that extension, and that was funded by a grant from the state. So there is some possible grant dollars to supplement those projects, plus our fuel tax dollars, we have a transportation improvement fund that potentially in the future, but we are talking long-term future to help fund those. But those, that's the type of report that we'll put together for city council's consideration with those dollar figures, and so you can set priorities as we move forward. The, is there a question on that one?
I have one question, if you don't mind. Regarding those projects, yeah, I agree with you that $5 million doesn't cover them all. Can it be allocated through, I'm sure we already know that. We already know that, what's our estimate, it costs $250,000 per mile roughly for a sidewalk?
I think that's what we.
Is that, unless there's bridges involved and things like that, right? So that being given, our ability to secure additional grants for those type of projects can be greatly enhanced by offering a reasonable cost share portion where we can stretch, say we allocated $1 million or a half a million for sidewalks in Seminole Woods, we might be, and instead of, let's say it's just a half a million, instead of being able to do two miles, if we're allocating, you know, $100,000 to offset the cost per mile for a grant, we might be able to stretch that out considerably further, just by having those funds available, where if we're asking for a total offset by the state, our chances of getting those grants are less likely.
Yep. Anytime you have a match, it increases the chance, and we are trying to, not trying, we are monitoring grant possibilities in the surrender.
And that same philosophy goes for road projects as well. If we're working with the state of Florida and willing to offset some of the cost to help expedite an Old Kings Road-type project or something like that, you know, the more money we can kick into it, the more favorable the state looks at it as well.
Yes. And just for city council's reiteration to you, but also for the public, that that's one of the arguments I hear from the county. But to use our local impact fee money for the Matanzas Wood interchange and a local match for that to expedite it, so that's one of those, you know, do you want to use those local impact fee monies for expedited interchange or a local street project?
But that's why it's our priority to choose.
Right. I'm just saying that that is part of that, that whole discussion that will come to you.
Right now, it seems like somebody else has been choosing the priority for us, and, you know, my view is, that's money that was supposed to come back to the city through the inter-local agreement, and we're supposed to determine those priorities based on that list of projects that was in our inter-local agreement.
I think, just to add on to the discussion on the $5 million, I think the gentleman is concerned that when we look at the Matanza and some of the other projects that we have to do, that the sidewalks are going to be shortchanged, and that they're not going to be high up on the list, and then they'll still be without sidewalks. So I think we may, we need to make sure that we can give the residents some assurance that their consideration will also be very high on the priority list as we move forward in trying to find monies.
Vice Mayor, the tennis and golf course, you know, it's always interesting, because we are asking Kemper to make changes to try to shorten that, shorten the shortfall of funding, and I hear both sides. I hear the. I hear the people complaining about the changes, and I hear the people saying, boy, it's about time, or you need to do more. But we are trying very hard to change the operation at the tennis center so that it generates more revenue from programs and lessons and clinics and tournaments and those type of possibilities by bringing in someone who is more, has better reputation in doing those type of programs, shorten the gap. If at all possible, actually having a private company, private individual really take this tennis center and run with it so that we can quit subsidizing. That's the goal, we're working towards that. It's by no prom, by no means can we promise that will happen, but we are trying very hard. Golf, you know, it's, once again, the prices that were quoted for a round of golf when we did our due diligence before we renovated were substantially higher per round. Our rounds are looking good at the golf course, it's just in the meantime, because a lot of golf courses are reducing their cost per round, that we're not, still not bringing in the revenue. We have increased those costs per round, I think you're going to see other golf courses are going to increase the cost per round, just a couple of dollars compared to what it was last year, to try to shorten that gap. It's going to be interesting to see if the price goes up, will the number of rounds come down, and, but that's what Kemper's working on right now. So, trying very hard to operate both of these in the sense of a business, as Mr. Carroll indicated. Golf course, a lot easier to do than the tennis center, but we're still working on both of those. Question about the engineering firm and extending the contract, those are what we call continuing service contracts. We went through a competitive proposal, and the reason for three is that they, different expertise for different type projects, in other words, you have a different expertise for a street project versus maybe a utility project, and we can get proposals from all three of them when we have a project coming forth. So, that's how the state law kind of outlines it, is having these continuing service contracts, and our contracts allow for annual renewals up to, I think it's a total of five years, and so that's what you're seeing in the week-end review. As far as the litigation, I'm going to let the city attorney address that item.
Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Erickson asked, in review of the week-end review, I think it's under the city clerk's report, if I'm not mistaken, it recognizes that there's a receipt of certain amount of legal documents. The vast majority of those, Mr. Erickson, deal with mortgage foreclosures in which the city is named as a party defendant, usually because of code enforcement liens or utility liens. I mean, it is a legal document, we are named as a defendant, so we see, we respond on behalf of the city to protect the interests as much as we can under Florida law, the interests of the citizens, and making sure that the monies that are secured by these liens are indeed captured through the foreclosure process. The other types that, and again, it depends on each month which types of documents, so I'm being general when I address your question. The other type of legal document that most likely you would, if you were to look at these documents, you would see, would be that there are occasional claims brought against the city for, let's say a city vehicle hits a bicycle or another car, or damages some property, you know, curb or something like that, and there's a claim brought, that goes to insurance defense. The city has insurance, and those claims are submitted to the insurance defense, and they'll, they'll handle it. And if it gets to the point where there's a lawsuit, then a lawyer is hired by the insurance company, and that law firm will represent the city in that claim. And that represents the vast majority of those claims. The other types of, if there's something that's a greater, larger, it comes to this council, this council, we don't report those types of matters because we consider those to be fairly routine, but I'm glad you asked the question. Anything else we bring to this council, so they're made aware of anything that could be a legal matter involving the city of Palm Coast.
Let me just piggyback on that last statement. We don't report it at public meetings, but we do report, as Mr. Erickson indicated, weekly in the week-end review.
Right.
So we send a written report every week, it's just not something we bring up at the meeting because it's fairly routine.
You do not want me to go through in my city attorney report, a list of the 14 foreclosures in which we were named because of utility liens and code enforcement liens, but that's what those documents reflect.
I think there's one more, Mr. McCarthy.
I thought his was in Seminole Woods, did I not? I thought I got it with the Seminole Woods.
Okay. All right, so matters not only agenda, city council.
I've got one. Jim, a while back, we talked about Lydell Drive, which is a cul-de-sac, and some of the residences were concerned, I guess an emergency vehicle was down there and had difficult time turning around, or something was going on, and they had requested the ability to have a no-exit sign posted at the front. They said that they often see larger vehicles heading down Lydell Drive, for some reason, getting stuck at the end and having a difficult time turning around. Do you know if we've looked into that, or if we've addressed that with a sign that says no exit or anything like that?
Well, I know we look into it, we get those kind of requests on a fairly regular basis, and there are certain type of signs that if you put up one, think about every cul-de-sac we have in town, and if you start putting up signs that say dead end or cul-de-sac, we would have to put them in every, and it really becomes ineffective. It's the same as no littering. You could put no littering on every street in town, and as soon as you start that, that's what happens. Another good example is children playing. Well, every street you have out there, you should be aware, and if you put children playing on one street, not the other, but there's also children playing on the other. So, those that are very common, we do not put a sign up to indicate that it is that given situation, and cul-de-sacs are part of that. So our response is that we do not put up those type of signs, it would be, once again, almost, I mean, there'd be hundreds if not thousands of them around town.
That's it.
Bill?
I just want to make a comment that those of us who were involved in one way or another in the library the last few months with the elections going on and saw some of the activities up there, I know that after the election was over, that this matter was brought to Chief Mark Carmen's attention, and I want to praise him publicly for his actions to curb the activities that a lot of us saw firsthand up at the library and make it a much safer place to go. I've had calls from some of the people that live in the B section that were afraid to go to the library at night because of the activities of the youth up there, and they're seeing that this has dissipated and is a much better place, so I just want to throw out a shout to Mark Carmen.
Anyone else? Discussion by city attorney, if matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Discussion by the city manager.
I wanted to report on the Half Marathon 5K Fund Run. There was actually a great crowd at European Village. It was, you know, all, great to see how many people from out of state were here. Got an email already that, well, I couldn't stay for the awards because I was from out of town, staying at the hotel, and they required checkout at 11 o'clock, so I thought that was great to see exactly what we were looking for.
So how did you do?
I did great rooting them on. I can tell you a personal story that I think is right on target for why do things like this at European Village and other commercial centers, is that my wife and I did go towards the end to check it out and kind of enjoy the atmosphere, and, but we hadn't had breakfast. And one of the restaurants there in European Village, we had no idea served breakfast, served breakfast, we sat down, had a great breakfast.
La Piazza?
La Piazza.
Great little breakfast, as a matter of fact.
And, we'll be back. And so, from a local standpoint, that exposure now helps that business, and hopefully there were others. We saw runners in there coming in, getting a cup of coffee, you know, it just, reaching the goal of letting people have fun, getting exposure for Palm Coast, having visitors come from out of town, spend the night, but also get our local residents out and about in our commercial centers, too.
You know, what's really cool about that is there are, as I remember it, four restaurants in there right now, each one has its own distinct following.
Yes.
La Piazza is a little bit, tends to be towards the high end. If you look at the websites, Europa is getting very good reviews for their food right now as well. And then, you know, you got.
Mezzaluna.
Mezzaluna, you know, there's no place in town that I like better for a.
Best eggplant, Parmesan, and.
Well, and tomato basil, garlic, whatever, pizzas, you know, it's inexpensive, it's a nice night, sit outside, enjoy, and my wife loves the tea garden. So, you know, you can find something for everybody there.
Well, in other, to just keep adding on, I also saw someone there that I know that was remodeling one of the empty storefronts because they're going to open up a new Irish pub.
Oh, really?
So, local investors, so you'll have another opportunity. And, once again, working with our event staff to see what else we can do at European Village and maybe some other areas to draw people in, so that's all part of that prosperity.
Need a waterside run.
Yes, you know, waterside run, you're going to have to help me out with that one, but.
Right along the intercoastal.
They, part of this run is along intercoastal, and the runners always talk about how the wow factor is with the trails and where it runs, and then the people putting it together, the sheriff commented, or Mark Carmen, sheriff's representative commented about how well it comes together. Doesn't happen easy, but, and making exactly the 13.1 mile or whatever is kind of interesting, too. But that was just one of our running series, and other events that we're going to keep moving forward with to help people, encourage people to get out, but also encourage people to come discover Palm Coast.
One of the comments that I heard was that the starting point, the starting and finishing European Village worked much better with the parking than it did over at the condo that was the year before.
Well, and the reason it wasn't held there before was the residents at the condo objected to it, so, but I can almost guarantee you the businesses are not objecting to the traffic, and so it's just more consistent with what our goal is, but, yeah, appreciate the positive feedback. Vice Mayor, that's all, I had to report.
Motion to adjourn.